Well, I've got close enough. I'm gonna call the May meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. May I have roll call, please? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Yanderson. Commissioner Berry.
Here.
Commissioner Hurd.
Here.
Commissioner Garab. Commissioner Misselhorn.
Here.
Commissioner Unis.
Here.
Chairman Wuzan.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. At this point in time, I'd like to have everybody who is going to give public testimony for or against any case, please rise if you're able, and raise your right hand. Be sworn in by Madeline, please.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge? Thank you.
Everybody who has stood, again, if you take a minute, you need to fill out the blue sheet that's over on the rail, so that it can be held for public record. Thank you. On the screens in front of you, you can see how that we go ahead and run the meeting. The city will present each case to us. We will then be able, when they're done, we'll be able to ask them questions. After that portion is done, the petitioner has a chance to come forward, to present their part of the case. When they're done, we will be able to ask them questions. When that part is finished, the public will be able to give public testimony for or against each case. When the public is done, the petitioner will have time to come back up for rebuttal. After that, we will close each, the hearing, and we will vote. These cases will go in front of the City Council on, somebody, Leah? City Council, these cases will go to City Council when?
Likely June 12th.
June 12th.
The normal date would be May 22nd, but we're gonna try to do June 12th.
June 12th? Okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes from April 5th.
Considered.
We have a motion and a second. On favor, the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All at the same time. Motion passes. Commissioners, I'd like to have your indulgence at this point in time to move a couple, one item off the agenda, which is Case PZ-18-16, which has to do with the District 150 and the sign at the stadium. This item has been, if we could move it up first, so we could vote on it and get it taken off, because it has, they have requested to defer this case. Does everybody have a motion?
Motion to move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All at the same time. Motion passes. So we will take, at this case, then, PZ-18-16. Shannon, don't you just have to read in the record that it's gonna be deferred for?
Read the case. Do you want me to read the case? Is that what you're saying?
To defer it, right?
This is a request to hold a public hearing and forward a recommendation to the City Council on the request of Robert Culp of Midwest Engineering and Associates for Peoria Public Schools, District 150, to rezone property from a Class R3, single-family residential district to a Class C1, general commercial district, for a portion of the property, approximately 4.3 acres in the southwest corner of the property, located at 400 East Wall Memorial Drive, and commonly known as Peoria Stadium.
And they want to defer for how long, 30 days?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to defer? Move to defer. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Yep.
Motion in the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All at the same time. Carries, thank you. This is to be Case Number PZ-18-11, which is continued from last month. Let me just give Roger a chance to get in here. Leah, Roger.
Yeah.
Leah, can you swear in the manual, please?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true to the best of your knowledge?
Thank you, Roger. Okay, Leah.
This is a public hearing on the request of Marsha Romaine to obtain a special use in a Class R6 multifamily residential district for a school for the arts, for the property identified as parcel identification number 1803310015, with an address of 919 Northeast Jefferson Avenue. So, from the screen here, I have just a street view of the property. As you heard last month, this is the former Greeley School Building. It sits on a 1.4 acre site, originally built and operated since the mid-1900s as a school within the Peoria Public School District. It has been closed and vacant since around 2011. So, Ms. Romaine is here to request a special use for a school for the arts to utilize individual rooms within portions of this building for art studios. Okay? It is an existing building, so there are obviously existing site elements that we've noted in our report to you that require waivers because of pre-existing conditions. So I'll just highlight those a little bit. The first waiver to note is the landscaping waiver. Again, we're dealing with a built site, large, hard surface, very little green space, so the waiver is to allow for existing landscaping to meet the requirements. And those would be one tree on Jefferson Street and four trees on Evans Street, that are currently all located within the parkway. The second waiver is to eliminate the parking lot perimeter landscaping screen. Third waiver is to allow for the existing exterior lighting to remain. And fourthly, the waiver to allow for the existing building setbacks, which, again, based on the placement of the building, there are waivers necessary from the front yard of Jefferson and a rear yard waiver. To conclude, this Development Review Board recommends approval of the request with the following conditions and waivers. The first condition is to repair the parking area and access to be free from potholes, ruts, channels, growth of vegetation, and other similar obstructions. The second is to, if provided, a garbage dumpster enclosure must be placed in a six-to-seven foot tall, four-sided, solid enclosure with a gate. All parking spaces must be striped in accordance with our regulations. Fourth condition is to repair or remove the existing chain link fence. And as I previously mentioned, the four waivers, one for landscaping, second waiver for lighting, third waiver for building setback, and the fourth waiver to eliminate the parking lot I can-
Yeah, I would like you to kind of reiterate or talk about information that has, that you have researched in regards to the state requirements as compared to our zoning requirements and our zoning laws that are in effect. And I'd like to also remind the commission and the audience that this commission is a, we are a board and a commission that recommends approval or denial to the City Council, but we also have two things that we look at when we have to deal with issues. Number one is our ordinances. And if a project fits to an ordinance, it's the definition of the ordinances and all definitions that are in the Land Development Code, then this project, then a project has to be either affirmed or denied, if it does not meet the code. So those, that, and our map that we have, which is an ever-changing comprehensive map, those are the ideas and the things that we have to use to make decisions upon the cases that come in front of us. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that. Leah?
Okay. So, I'm trying to give a brief overview of last month's meeting. If you recall, the discussion occurred on the use of the Greeley School Building as a school for the arts and its proximity to another adjacent use at 1005 Northeast Jefferson, which is across the street. And its approval, current approval for that property has a special use for a halfway house and a concern with certain services and persons that may reside at the halfway house in its proximity to the proposed school for the arts. We still maintain that this is an appropriate use for the school building and maintain the recommendation of approval regardless of the halfway house location. And there's a couple reasons that I'll bring to your attention for that support. The first is that the school for the arts term as used for the special use is a term specific to the City of Peoria Unified Code. It's a defined term, school for the arts, meaning that it provides an opportunity for art uses, music, dance, martial arts, photography, or other similar facilities. Versus the definition that is found in the Illinois compiled statutes for just the term "school," which I wanted to bring to your attention, is not the same. School means a public or private preschool or elementary or secondary school. That's from the Illinois compiled statutes, the section dealing with sex offender. So I'm bringing the differences to you. It's not the, they're not the same definition. Another reason that we, again, continue to support the proposed is that the school for the arts term, as in our Unified Development Code, is in the commercial category of our uses. It is not in the educational category of our uses. And to staff, that's a good distinction to mean, show the intent of it being not an educational use. It's a commercially placed category as a special use for the school for the arts. And then lastly, as I think I mentioned last month, the separation requirements that were brought to our attention is not a regulation that the city has in our codes. And just want to stress that it's not something that we would enforce or have the authority to rule upon for that halfway house operation that is across the street. So for those reasons, we do recommend your approval. We think it's a great use of the building. I know the petitioner, the remains, are here again and can probably provide you with more information that they have done since the last meeting, and we can certainly answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the city?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just a small point of information, and sorry if this has already been asked. Is this Greeley School inside the North Unneside National Register District?
I would have to look at that. I can pull that layer up.
Okay, no, just a point of information. I was just curious about that.
I can find that out.
Okay, thank you.
Leah, I have a question. Has there been a written opinion from Corporation Counsel on this subject, the definition of school and the use relative to the state statute for the halfway house?
I did request that, but unfortunately, I don't have that in time for this meeting. So I do not have our legal input in time for this meeting, so I apologize.
Mr. Leis, not here, or?
I don't know what his availability was or his rationale.
Thank you. I guess I could ask how long ago you requested that?
About two and a half weeks ago, I think it was, three weeks ago maybe, through email. So I was hoping to receive and give him a response, but-
I would think that would be kind of important. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
No, but I think as she has stated, it's really not in the city code. It's a governmental issue, code.
But Mark's question was more about the definition.
It's Mark's question. But again, evidently, legal hasn't-
Yep. Mrs. Romaine, do you want to come forward?
I do.
Mr. Romaine?
Come on up, sir.
We have a duty to the last, uh, I don't know what you mean.
You're right here, just come right here, right here, right here, right here. To the podium.
I wanted to, if I hate you guys, and, uh-
Give that to Leah.
Uh, let me start, uh, thank you guys for being here.
Now, I'm gonna dump, I'm gonna hold you up a second.
Okay. You let me know when to go.
First thing I need you to do is state your name and address for the record, so we can go, go from there.
Jonathan Romaine, 1919 North Sheridan Road, Peoria, 61604.
Proceed, sir.
Okay, let me first start by thanking you guys for being so kind to my lovely wife last month. She told me that you all were real gentle with her. And what she shared with you last month was the what. She explained to you what we wanted to do. What I want to share with you guys is the why. Because I think that's important and germane to the relative scope of what we're trying to do. Anyone that knows me, they know that I've been very upfront and vocal about my history. I grew up in the city of Chicago and was a part of all of the things that you can imagine takes place in a city, particularly a city like Chicago. And I was wanting to change the scope of my life from what I saw then, but I didn't do that well in school. And after talking to my guidance counselor in high school, she kind of discouraged me from going to college. And I was getting ready to enlist in the Marine Corps, just to escape the environment that I came up in. But in an inadvertent conversation with a friend of mine, I learned that no matter how well you did in high school, you could still go to a junior college and consequently transfer to a university. And so I abandoned the idea of going to the Marine Corps, went to a community college right outside of Chicago called Triton, did well enough that first year to where Bradley University accepted me the following year, despite the fact that I had graduated at the bottom 10% of my high school class. Now, what I had done was successfully removed myself from the ghetto. But I didn't remove the ghetto for me. And unfortunately, I came to Peoria while attending Bradley, doing many of the things that I was doing while living on the west side of Chicago. And unfortunately, at the end of my junior year in college, I was caught selling drugs. I bonded out Falters case my entire senior year. Two weeks before I was supposed to graduate, I was convicted. The judge allowed me to bond out. I graduated, and I turned myself in two weeks later, and was given 15 years in prison. I had gone from accomplishing something that nobody in my family would have ever dreamed of by marching across the stage and receiving my degree from Bradley University, to going into a system that everybody expected of me. And while I was not able to transform my life before I went to prison, I made it up in my mind that while I was in prison, I was coming out a better person. And so while I was in prison during the seven and a half years, I found my first love again, which was art. And for 17 to 18, 19 hours every day for seven and a half years, I painted, I read, and I studied, and I prepared myself, more than ever, to come out of that institution and be the person that I wanted to ultimately be by going to Bradley. And now, 20 years later, I have been blessed with an opportunity to speak with people all over the countries, from businesses to colleges to prisons, about my journey and my path. Which leads me to the why. I spoke at a juvenile prison in Chicago at a GED graduation. I walked into the room, and it was this one kid. I looked at him, and I saw death in his eyes. He was perhaps the meanest-looking individual I had ever seen in my life. After I finished speaking, a man walked up to me and said, "My son would like to speak to you." I walked over to the table, and the little kid that I looked at and thought was the devil incarnate, was sitting at that table with tears rolling down his eyes. And he said to me, "I want to change my life, I just don't know how." That's why I'm doing, excuse me, that's why I'm doing what I'm doing now, is because I want to have an impact, a sustained impact, on my brothers and sisters that are in these communities that have been forgotten by everybody else in the world. My wife and I are committed to spending the rest of our lives saving their lives. That is the why. Now, my wife asked for a continuance, and she reached out to the few people that you all recommended that she reached out to. She talked with the lady who was here last month. When they left, they didn't come to a resolution. The two gentlemen that she reached out to, she never got a return call. And I personally went and spoke with Michael Kennedy myself. And it was a pleasant conversation, and I assured Michael Kennedy that no matter what the outcome of these proceedings are, he and I can still go have lunch down the road, because it's not personal. What he is doing in the community is an incredible job. I looked up his organization, and I don't think that we're any distance between what we both are trying to do. But I do think there's a fatal flaw in what Michael Kennedy has done. And that is to have a halfway house that takes in sex offenders right next door to a school. Now, his argument is that the school was closed, and consequently, he was there first. But as you saw from the video you put up on the screen, as I see from the building that I look at every time I go down there, that flies in the face of common sense. Greeley was built 100 years ago as a school. It has been a school since then until now, whether you have students in there or not, it is a school. And consequently, there is absolutely nothing in his special use zoning that conflicts with anything in what we're trying to do with our special use zoning. The problem comes when you talk about the sex offender part in his contract with the feds. And now, let me regress just for one moment and explain to you. If there was anybody in this room right now that could understand the significance and the importance of a halfway house or a work release center, I'm that guy. Because I came back to Peoria in the work release center. In fact, I came to the old work release center, and it was while I was there that we moved and started the new work release center. The superintendent of that work release center is a dear friend of mine. The warden of a prison that I was in is a dear friend of mine, and he subsequently became the superintendent of that work release center. When Springfield was talking about closing this work release center, the director of that center called me and asked if I could come in and present a statement on their behalf, and I gladly did, because I believe in the power of redemption. My life is a walking testimony to the power of redemption. But when you say, "I don't want you to use a 50,000 square foot school for children because I'm housing 28 offenders, and some of them may be sex offenders," I say, "That's a problem." That is a problem. Now, if I do not prevail, and I go away, what will happen when the next person comes who wants to use Greeley as a school? Do they say the same thing, in perpetuity? Every time somebody that wants to come into this community to do something that will benefit our young people in our community, in the city as a whole, you can't stand up and say, "I was there first." It flies in the face of common sense. It doesn't make any sense to me. And we're trying to do something, not just for the young, beautiful people that will benefit, but I would say also for the city of Peoria. What city can't use more art? What city can't use more creative people? That area has been used as a toilet stool. And I'm saying, no more. I'm saying, we don't want to continue to use that as a toilet stool. We want to actually build that community up and help the residents of that community, help Peoria to have a different look. When you think about that report that came out in the 24/7 Wall Street, it said this was the worst city in America for African-Americans. My wife and I didn't complain and cry and fuss about it. We put our heads together and said, "What can we do about it?" And this is what we're trying to do. And it would be a shame that if the powers that be decided that what we're trying to do isn't worthy of the effort. It would be a shame even if Michael Kennedy couldn't see the benefit of what we're doing. And it's not taken away from him, because-
Can I, I just need you to wrap up, if you don't mind, sir.
All right, just one last point, and I'll be done.
Okay, thank you.
If I was given a $6.5 million grant, and if I had an opportunity to get a $13 million grant, location wouldn't stop me from getting that grant. So I don't believe for one minute that his business or his organization will fail or even be that much hurt. Because when you're talking about that kind of money, you can find another location, albeit it may be difficult, but it's not impossible. And I assure you, if I was the CEO of that company, I wouldn't have any problem finding another location, when you're talking about that kind of money. But on the opposite side of that, if my wife and I don't prevail, there will be no community arts center in Peoria. We don't have a budget of $6.5 million. All we have is elbow grease and hard work, without our clothes. Thank you.
Hold on a minute. This is really, well, excuse me, this is very impressive. You need to stand up every day. They ought to be standing up and applauding you every day for what you've done and what you've come back to, believe me. That is very impressive.
Don't, wait, don't leave. Okay.
Mr. Romaine, I think the only, I'll say, point of discussion, sticking point, is the issue of this potential conflict of the regulations with the halfway house.
I understand that.
Right. First of all, clarify to us that this community arts center that you're proposing is not a daycare center, it's not a grade school or an elementary school, it's not a preschool or anything of that nature, and there won't be children residing, living there. It's a community arts center, is that correct?
Completely correct.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll just make a comment, and I guess with a question too, really. Because I think from my perspective, everything you're doing is right, it's in the right location. The only mistake that had been made in the past probably was allowing that work release center being located that close to the school property, as you stated in your comment. That was the mistake, is I don't know the history of it, when it happened exactly, but I think everything you're doing for that area is correct. So as far as the work release facility and Mr. Kennedy and things like that, I don't know if there's any recourse on his part. I don't know- I don't know, I don't understand exactly what would happen if you opened up your arts center there, how that impacts them, would they be required to move? I don't know if that's even the case or not, because that's the area...
Well, as I understand it, the sex offenders, they cannot reside within 500 feet of any place where children congregate. And so, like I said, I thought that was a fatal flaw for them ever going there, because who can imagine Greeley being used as anything that would? I can think of a thousand businesses to put in Greeley, 999.9 of them will deal with children. So, the question is, do you ask of this city, do you ask of this community to leave this school barren forever? Is that a reasonable expectation?
Questions.
You might remind him he'll have an opportunity. You might remind him he'll have an opportunity.
Oh, last question, I got one final question too. As far as the city recommendations, as you guys reviewed those, and their comments on those, do you have any issues with those eight items that were on there as you reviewed this on the development review board as far as the parking area, garbage dumpster?
No, we actually, no, we all, we went over all of those, and we were agreeable to just about everything.
Okay.
I want to remind you, sir, that after the public testimony, you do have an opportunity to come up for five minutes to any rebuttal or anything else you'd like to say, okay?
Thank you, and I appreciate your patience and your time. Sorry that I went a little...
That's fine. Thank you. Anybody like to provide public testimony for or against this case? Mr. Kennedy, state your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Kennedy, 600 Fayette, 61654 in Peoria. I'm the president and CEO of the Human Service Center, which owns the property at 1005 Northeast Jefferson, which would be across heavens from the property in consideration. I'm going to try not to repeat everything I said last month, but if there's questions, be glad to answer them. Briefly, we continue to be in support of the petitioner's request to establish an enterprise focusing on adult artist workspace. Our concern is related to the involvement of a school for individuals under the age of 18. When HSC was granted a zoning variance for our current Federal Bureau of Prisons residential reentry center program in 2012, we were clear it was a zero-reject contract that would also include some individuals who are identified as registered sex offenders. Our communication from the then-property owner, which was Peoria Public Schools, was an indication they did not intend to use the building for school purposes in the future. Establishment of a child-related school, park, or daycare within 500 feet of our property would result in an inability to meet the requirements of our FBLP contract. At the last meeting, I was asked to do two different things. One was to meet with the petitioner, which did occur on April 11. I believe we share an appreciation for what each other was doing, but the meeting did not result in a change in the HSC position related to this project. The other request was I was to seek a written response from the Federal Bureau of Prison as to the impact of our currently in-process contract negotiations if this zoning variance were to be approved as originally requested. We received written notification from our contract liaison in Chicago last week indicating that our request for a written proposal had been forwarded to the Federal Bureau of Prison Legal Department, but there is no response at this time. My experience with negotiating these competitive federal contracts in the past is that the federal department personnel are extremely cautious in their communications so that there's no perception of favoritism toward one bidder or another by making a statement of how it would evaluate a factor that's part of what they call the scope of work. That's what the contract is. The scope of work indicates that we would operate in compliance with all federal, state, and local laws and ordinances in the delivery of the transitional services we provide, and location of a school for individuals under the age of 18 within 15 feet of our property could be a violation. We like that people are interested in investing in our community, providing activity that supports interest in the arts and opportunities for children. We would welcome a new neighbor and the repurposing of the structure being discussed. We ask that if the zoning commission were to approve the variance as originally requested for the use of this property as a school, it be limited to individuals over the age of 18.
Do you have, in regards to the definition of what Leah read from the feds and what we're saying at this point in time, do you understand, what's your take on the definitions?
Okay. It feels like to me we're splitting hairs, and who will interpret that is our contractor, the Federal Bureau of Prisons. Y'all asked me that last time, and I don't know how they're going to look at this. I wish that I could say for sure this, they would go, "We aren't going to continue to negotiate with you for a future contract if this is the situation you're in." I don't know that. It is a risk, though, and that's my concern is...
And you understand the position that we have in my statement earlier today? Thank you. Any other questions?
Two questions. When Peoria Housing was looking at that for low-income housing, children would be there also. How did you approach that issue? If that...
Same way.
I don't remember being, you being at that hearing or at our zoning, but maybe you were, and that doesn't make any difference. Second question, is 100% of your population sex offenders?
Absolutely not.
So, what is the population? The percentage?
I guess it's between 15 and 20%, and it varies. It's the individuals coming out of prison, they're going to transition with 150 miles of Peoria, and they may be a registered sex offender, not because they're in federal prison, but from previous offenses.
Thank you.
And how do you handle the fact of the neighbors that if the neighbors housing, if there's a residential house next door, how does that play in?
I don't know.
Children?
I don't know.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Kennedy? Thank you. Anybody else? Carrie, did I see you?
Name Christopher Coleman, 2915 August Dennis Street, Peoria, Illinois.
Thank you, sir.
605. Let the city breathe. This really is a no-brainer. North side, the south side of this city, the 61605 area code. Down here, the Taft Homes, the neighborhoods that the arts center is going to be built around. City breathe, let our kids have something to do. That's basically, this is like my father said, I asked him, "What should I say, pops, when I go down here?" He said, "And he's a man on his last leg." He said, "It's a no-brainer. Let the city breathe. Our kids need this. We need this arts center." Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Barnes, 1312 West Parkside Drive. I run a business called Ear in the Envelope in the Warehouse District. I actually worked at a after-school art program in Elgin. I was the director for eight years and saw a huge impact in the community. Gangs were out of control in Elgin, and this was the one place where kids who did not want to be in the gangs would hang out for a few hours after school. Do we want to trade the lives of children under 18 for a convenient location? I am hoping there's a resolution that everybody can work together and you can work it out. But if not, what is the priority for our city? I drive downtown in that area, I've gotten my tires blown out, there were actually kids shooting tires with one of those air nail guns as you go by. We've had snowballs thrown. You're afraid to be in that area. Why don't we bring that area up by making changes instead of continuing to have it a place with no hope? I'm just saying, think about the kids and hope.
Thank you. You're good.
My name's Kelly Meehan, and I live at 2631 North Peoria, 61603. I've known Johnny Romaine for many years and his whole family. When I first heard about this, I was freaked out because of the house across the street that the Human Service Center owns. But then a light went off in my head. Wow, we need to take that as a blessing. We know who's living in that house between the city, Jonathan, and the Human Service Center. They can work together and set up some kind of a security system between those locations. I agree with the previous speakers. Our children should not be thrown away and not be able to have access to a program like that. The Human Service Center that has that place, I don't know how long it's taken in sex offenders, but for many years, it was just mental health, people with mental health issues. So, they haven't been there all that many years with sex offenders. Johnny Romaine, as you heard, went through a really rough life, but now, he's pulled himself up by the bootstraps and has done some awesome work. He is the perfect role model for these children in teaching them art, talking to them, and working with them. When I first found out about it, I questioned it to myself. Why does this black man who lives in the worst city for blacks, the second worst city for blacks, want to put money back into the city? Why doesn't he turn tail and run? But no, he didn't. He's continued working, trying to get this to happen and to become a center in Peoria for the arts, for children, for the kids that need a role model, something to do, a friend, somebody they can go to. This is no big secret. It's not going to be a babysitting service or a school service. It's an art center, run by a man who's been there, done that. And I think with everybody involved, city council, you guys, Mike Kennedy, Johnny Romaine, we need to put our thinking hats on and try to put in some kind of security systems to protect these kids. They both should be able to cohabitate because they're both needed.
Thank you.
Robin Stewart, 6726 North Basket Oak Drive, Edwards, Illinois, 61528.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here in support of granting the special use name, School for the Arts, to Art Inc. as requested by Jonathan and Nikki Romaine. I'm a member of the larger Peoria community, and I believe that bringing art education to kids in the city of Peoria will provide a much-needed after-school program, which will be one of its kind, as far as I know, free of charge. This is the type of program that enhances the community and helps to motivate kids to find and channel their passions into productive work. And kids who learn the value of productive work become productive, contributive members of society in which we live. I ask today that you will vote in support of the Romaines and grant the special use School for the Arts. Thank you.
My name is David Somerall, I live 4417 West Rockwell Drive, that's in Peoria, Illinois, 61615. You talk about Greeley School, it's the focal point of the north end of Peoria, focal point. Everything you drive up and down the street, this is big abandoned building, they're just sitting there. My ties with that is my wife is from the Taft Homes, been together for 30 years. I had a chance to reach, raise my kids through places like the Friendship House, the after-school program down on the north end. So, I had a chance where my kids were able to go to these places to escape all of this stuff from around. My oldest son is a supervisor Pepsi. My daughter is in, she's in Methodist with a 3.8 grade average to be a nurse with a bachelor's. My son is a local Union 165, and also is in the military, that he goes back and forth, you know, National Guards and stuff like that. So, having these kind of places around, you guys know, it's a good thing. Not saying anything about halfway house and nothing like that, but if we could put it in the Warehouse District, as far as I'm concerned, you know, where everybody is safe, the people next door, the people next door to them, what is different between 500 and one feet, you know what I'm saying, and one feet? I mean, you know, don't, you know, put our kids up for like they're some kind of test race, something to see what these guys are going to do. I mean, all due respect to Mr. Kennedy, takes a place of taking it in his neighborhood. Thank you.
I'm Leanne Schmigall, the executive director of Habitat for Humanity, and the reason I'm here today is just to let you know that we are committed to this area and bringing families to this area.
I'm going to need your address.
Sorry. 931 North Douglas, Peoria, Illinois, 61603.
Thank you.
In the past few years, we have been bringing families to this area, building new homes, we've been doing rehabs, and just to let you know that by the end of 2019, we will have been investing $2 million in homes. But the real thing that we're bringing to this area is home ownership, and we have counted so far bringing 76 children to this area at the end of 2018, and that will just keep growing with our commitment to this area. What I just want to say is that what they're talking about, obviously, is something that can affect our children that we're bringing to this area. We need to keep this momentum going of building up the near-north side, and this means children. It doesn't mean the people that are 18 and over, because yes, they're going to be involved in this, and they can do what they want to do, but we have children that we want to bring into this area, we want them to thrive, we want them to be part of this arts center. And so, what Habitat just wants to say is that we don't, we want to bring people there. We don't want children to leave, we don't want families to, and we've just had this recently, say, "I'm not sure that that's where I want to build my home and have my family." And so, we do what we can to say, "Listen, we're partnering with you, and we're going to partner with people like the Romaines to bring business and bring arts and bring private business back into this area and more families so that there isn't as much crime, and that we're going to do our due diligence to keep those families safe." Yes, I do know that a report comes out to all of our homeowners through the school system. I know they do that for my children, where it says, "This is the updated sex offender list." And yes, you can choose wherever you want to live, and maybe the next two streets over, there might be someone there that you maybe want to watch your kids around. But what this is saying is that if we can do something upfront to make sure that we don't have our children that want to go there and their parents to say, "Well, I'm not sure that that's where I want them to go because of the situation," we don't want that to make that a hardship, when here, these people are freely giving of themselves to bring this. And like he said, if it just sits there, how's that going to help what we're doing in that area? in that area? So, that's just what I want to let you know, is that we're just supportive of anybody that wants to bring business and bring family life back to that area. And whatever we can do to help and help our families is the reason I'm here, to represent them. Thank you.
Thank you. As you're coming forward, Carrie, I'm going over the five minutes just by a little bit.
I'll try to be concise.
Thank you.
Alms 1005 Northeast Perry Avenue. I've lived in that area for about 24, 25 years now, and Greeley's been used for different things, and it's been vacant. And I rise in support of what the Romaines would like to do at this school. But Mr. Romaine pointed out a very important thing was that when Mr. Kennedy was granted his zoning in 2012, after consolidating from 711 Monroe and 405 or 403, whatever it was, Perry, he gave up his special uses at that. And he came before what was then the Planning Commission. And there's two of you that are on the Planning Commission today that were there at that time, and you voted to approve his consolidation because of a contract change. And that vote in 2012 was 4 to 2. And then, he went to City Council, and he explained the same thing. And Councilman Sandberg, as we all remember, was very high attention to detail. He said, "Now, for sure you're going to give up your special uses, yes." So, he was allowed to go there, okay? We need Greeley to be turned into something productive, okay? It could be housing. Commissioner Eunice, when you asked about what happened with Taft, well, they could put housing in there, and that's not an issue. It's when it's a facility that's providing the services to those that are under 18. So when they introduced the school, that's when it kind of got, you know, shaky and was not going to be a good fit any longer. So when you look at the documents that came out for this case, and you have the Development Review Board, and there's members from the Fire Department, the Planning Department, the Police Department, and Traffic, and all that kind of stuff. I think one of the problems that we have in the city that has become evident with this property is, there's no, it appears that there's no mapping of special uses and what those special uses entail. So maybe that's not brought forward. But to go specifically to the thing, do we need an opportunity like the Romaines are proposing for the city of Peoria, for the north side in particular? Absolutely. But because Mr. Kennedy is there first, and he has a population, which he very clearly identified when he went for his zoning, he was approved for his zoning. And that's where in comes the real rub. I've handed out to you a Venn diagram. And I think that, you know, I'm 59, but I still can remember how to use one of these. And so, I made, I'm not going to presuppose that you'd make the same kind of Venn diagram that I am, but my Venn diagram has a federal halfway house with a step-down offender program. So it's not just the sexual offenders that are there, but it's anybody else who's in a step-down program, trying to get reintegrated into the community, that would be impacted, potentially, if that's moved somewhere else. And then we have the proposed School of the Arts. And again, it's a facility. I think we're getting hung up on this idea of a school. That's not it. It's a facility that's providing services to those that are under 18. So, if you have them mixed in the middle, that's not a good thing. And we all hope that life goes on, and we don't have mixtures of people that do things that are inappropriate with children and everything. But we know that that can happen, and we know that there needs to be security, but that's not enough. The regulation says 500 feet. As I recall, if it's accurate from the last time, from property line to property line, it's 80 feet. So that's not enough distance. And if you talk to someone, who knows someone who's been affected by sexual abuse, or if you talk to a sex abuse victim, it is only one time that can make the difference. We know that this is here, and it's a very problematic thing. It's very unfortunate. And although Mr. Romaine says Mr. Kennedy can up and move and go somewhere else, affordable housing is challenging to locate in this community. A halfway house is even more challenging. When it was proposed to be on the south side, it didn't go. It's been on the north side for many years, and it's been in that location for 2012. Obviously, our community has a need for that. And then I would further point to the fact that in the Unified Development Code, which is something that we're referring to and using, under the purpose and authority of this code, it says, "Promoting the public health, safety, and general welfare, preserving the overall quality of life for visitors and residents, maintaining orderly and compatible land use and development patterns, establishing clear and efficient development review and approval procedures, accommodating growth and development that complies with the preceding stated purposes." In a section in the Development Code, there's something called conflicting provisions, which I've given a copy to Chairman Nusant. 1.8.1, conflict with state or federal regulations. If the provisions of this Development Code are inconsistent with those of the state or federal government, the more restrictive provision will control to the extent permitted by law. The more restrictive provision is the one that imposes greater restrictions or more stringent controls on development. Perhaps, I don't know, but perhaps, the 500-foot rule precludes the use, even though it's a commercial designation and it's not really a school by the city's definition, it still is a facility that would provide services for those 18 years and under. 1.8.2, conflict with other city regulations. If the provisions of this Development Code are inconsistent with one another, or if they conflict with provisions found in other adopted ordinances or regulations of the city, the more restrictive provision will control. The more restrictive provision is the one that imposes greater restrictions or more stringent controls on development. As Mr. Romaine has clearly identified, Mr. Kennedy, on behalf of the Human Service Center, was granted that, and I don't think that anybody really thought about another use for the school, but that's already been decided. And the last one, 1.8.3, conflict with private agreements and covenants. This Development Code is not intended to interfere with, abrogate, or null any easement, covenant, deed restriction, or other agreement between private properties. If the provisions of this Development Code impose a greater restriction than imposed by a private agreement, the provisions of this Development Code will control. If the provisions of a valid, enforceable private agreement impose a greater restriction than this Development Code, the provisions of the private agreement will control. The city does not enforce or maintain a record of private agreements. While that is true, Mr. Kennedy has repeatedly come and told the city since 2012 that he has a contract. He's restated today he has a contract. He's negotiating a contract. He's trying to get something from the Federal Bureau of Prisons. It's really quite a mess. But when you grant an ordinance, which was ordinance number 16881, that gave him the use of that property as a halfway house, it appears that by this use is an impact, and it overzones, and we all hate to hear that word, litigation, but if he's not able to comply because those children are going to be at a facility less than 500 feet away, I think that's a problem. And it speaks to a much larger issue than just this case, 1811. It speaks to someone who would come down here and get zoning from you. And you would approve, then it goes to City Council, and they would approve. They would invest their time, their money, their talents, and whatever other personal and human resources, like staff and time, to build something. And then you come down, and you allow another use that is incompatible, that creates problems, and that's not orderly. So again, I support the Romaines and their efforts. Unfortunately, Mr. Kennedy was there first. Relocating a federal halfway house is going to be extremely difficult, and I would ask that you consider your decision very carefully. Thank you.
Carrie, anybody else?
Good afternoon. I am Councilwoman Denise Moore. I represent the First District. My address is 723 West Spring Hollow Lane, Peoria, 61605. And I'm going to be very brief, because I have to tell you that both of the petitioner and the halfway house and the Greeley School are both in my district, and I would like for both of them to stay. There's been talk about how to, one, to be able to collaborate with the other. I am hopeful that that can happen. Sticking with the facts that you have before you, the halfway house, if this property, the Greeley School, is approved, it is not in conflict with the halfway house. That has been confirmed. The halfway house can stay if this property is approved for the use that the Romaines are requesting. The halfway house can stay. Everybody knows that. It's in our rules. It was read to you. Does not have any private agreements with anyone. The halfway house can stay. I've been talking about this for the last couple of weeks, because thankfully, Mr. Romaine has come out to the community, as you all noticed, that the council has become more and more willing for more and more community input. And to his credit, Mr. Romaine came out to the various neighborhood associations that I attended this last couple of weeks to explain his position and what he was trying to do. And during that time, we were asking, I was asking Planning and Zoning to let me know if one is in conflict with the other. And consistently, they came back saying, "No, one is not in conflict with the other." Now, the operation inside the halfway house, which we do not, as a city, determine, now what's inside, in addition to being a halfway house, you layer on top, bringing in sex offenders. That's a different thing than what's on our books. We approved for a halfway house, which can stay. And I want them to stay. I am hopeful that the Romaine's project would eliminate the need for a halfway house anywhere, that we would drive you out of business because we wouldn't have any sex offenders. Wouldn't that be wonderful? That would be wonderful. Perhaps, some of the folks in your halfway house could benefit from Jonathan coming over there and talking about art and getting involved with art. Yes, the halfway house can stay. The sex offenders would have to figure something out for that. But I believe, based upon his meeting with the neighbors in a surrounding area, with the community at large in the First District, and as you've heard from people outside of the First District, they are in support of this project. And our own regulations, as read to you by Leanne, indicate that zoning-wise, by the letter of what we have on our own books, this is eligible.
Anybody else? Mr. Romaine, is there anything you'd like to add? Five minutes, please.
Okay, thanks. I just want to address a few things that were said subsequent to me speaking. And I'll address the latter first with Mrs. Alms. And she indicated that, and I can't recall the numbers in the statutes that she iterated, but what I do know is that the halfway house, when they actually got their special use, didn't mention anything about sex offenders in their special use acquisition. They just specifically mentioned a halfway house, and the fact that the sex offender part came subsequent to that, and outside of the purview of the public, is an alarming thing. Because I can't imagine in anybody else's community where that would be acceptable. It was almost as though they did a switch and bait. They came in and asked for a special use for a halfway house, which simply says, "A facility primarily designed for the residence of persons on parole or mandatory supervised release," and that's it. And subsequent to that, in, you know, in reading the statutes, I understand that they didn't need special permission for the sex offender aspect of it, but I do think it would be an absolute necessity in anybody else's community for that to be something dealt with in the light of day. I can't imagine anybody else's community being okay with the way that this was done. So, for all of the other codes that Mrs. Alms mentioned, it's irrelevant based off of what he asked for. Now, and I just want to address one other thing, and that was, Mr. Kennedy, he stated that he had permission from the school district because they said they were not going to use that facility as a school again. And the problem I have with that is, who in the school district would have had that jurisdiction? Would that not have been something that would have had to come up in front of a board? Because in making a decision like that, you impact the value of that school, which is not in the interest of the district. So if there is no legal, not legal, but if there is no written permission from whoever that was that gave him that tacit agreement, then I would argue that that doesn't even exist. Because just on the face, it makes no sense. If you're a homeowner, and somebody says, "I want to open up something next door to your house," and you know that by them opening up what they want to open is going to undervalue your home, why would you give them that permission? Then, it makes it worse if you are not the owner. If you're just overseeing this house for a temporary period, how can you make that decision for everybody that's to come later? And more importantly, how can you make that decision for the next owner? Now, one of the things that I asked Mr. Kennedy when I went to visit him was simple. In understanding that you have a $6.5 million grant right now, and you're working on a $13 million grant, why didn't you just buy the property? That would have alleviated any future headaches. The property was on the open market for $120,000. If you think about how little that is in comparison to the amount of his grants, it would have been a small gesture to make to alleviate any future problems. His response to me was, "What will I do with a school?" And I think therein lies the problem. I can do something with that school. And I don't think it's fair for him or anybody else to dictate what I can do with or without that school if they don't own the property. And what we're asking does not violate any codes. It does not inflict on any codes. The only thing that it jeopardizes is a contract that he has with the feds. And I would argue, it only jeopardizes it in a small amount, because if you gave me those contracts, I guarantee you, I would have another place if I needed to have another place. I would do whatever it took to make sure that I kept those contracts intact. So I don't even think that's an issue. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll close the hearing. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like, well, I should read the findings of fact for a special use, and then we can have a discussion, if that's okay?
Yes, sir. These are the findings of fact for a special use case for us to consider as we debate this. The establishment, maintenance, or operation of this special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. This special use will not be injurious to the use- This special use will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish or impair property values within the neighborhood in which it is to be located. The establishment of special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Adequate facilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities have been or will be provided. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress, so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The proposed special use is not contrary to the objectives of the official comprehensive plan of the City of Peoria. If a public use or a use providing public utility service, that such use or service shall meet a demonstrable public need and provide a public benefit. The special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located, except as regulations may, and each instance be modified pursuant to the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission." Thank you. I think there's a lot of things that were brought up today that-
Get a motion.
-we need to- I understand that. And I know you have to leave, but I-
No, no, I think-
But-
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
Well, this all has to do with, as we're getting ready to vote. So, the thing is that there's a lot of things that were brought up today. And I think there's a lot of things that this commission and the city need to, in my estimation, look at. Number one, not having a response back from legal, to me, is kind of unacceptable. Number two, we can't speak on some of the things that were brought up because we don't have, and we were not privy and don't have the minutes from that meeting when the special use was granted to him, so we can't really speak to any of the issues that were talked there. Again, like I said earlier, all we have is what is presented to us and our regulations that we know. So, with that, I'll call the question.
May I have a few comments, please? Since we're in discussion. I am in support of the motion. I think that the use proposed by the Remains for this is greatly beneficial to that area of the city and our city in general. I think that the information that we as Planning and Zoning Commissioners have in front of us, as researched and stated by staff, and is summarized by Councilperson Moore, is that based on our city zoning ordinance, this special use is a good fit and can be granted. Is it possible, is it possible that the allowing of the halfway house six years ago is regrettable? Possibly. But the use or housing of sex offenders, if that was not known at that time, that's certainly a significant issue. I would also say that even Mr. Kennedy, and I fully understand his position, he's trying to make the decision that is best for his business, his operation. But even he said this could affect, he didn't say it will or absolutely can, and it doesn't mean that it can't operate as a halfway house either. So, I don't think we can not approve this based on something that someone in a biased position says could happen. And lastly, I would say that not only is this good for the neighborhood, but it's also good for Peoria Public Schools because they have a property that will likely be unused for more continued years. It's been over seven years now. They're going to get it off their books. They're going to not have to maintain it, insure it, and have liability for it. And that certainly is a good thing for our district, too. So, all in all, the potential benefits and positive aspects of this far outweigh any other questions that may be around it, that really aren't for us to decide, certain political or legal questions that we aren't in a position to answer. So, I'm very much in favor of it.
One of the reasons that I seconded, or that I made the motion, the Councilperson that's in charge of this area has stood there at that podium and stated that it's not in the city regulations. She stated it very clearly. What these people are doing, bringing that school back to life in that area, cannot, you've got to stand up and congratulate them every day of the week, I tell you. It's amazing what they're willing to do. And I can't believe the percentage that Mr. Kennedy quoted is not that great as far as the number of rooms in that facility. That is why I made the motion to approve.
And I seconded that motion because of two points in particular. First of all, Lee Allison read into the record what a school was, and it's not a school by definition, school of the arts. It's different. She explained that thoroughly, which persuades me. And then, one of the gentlemen in the audience, Mr. Coleman, said, "It's a no-brainer." And like his dad said after that, to me, it's a no-brainer based upon that. And I believe it should be able to coexist with the halfway house being there, too. And it could be a benefit to the halfway house, too, that somebody mentioned also, where some of the residents there may actually participate in this. And I don't see this, I don't understand this to be strictly an after-school program. I believe it's for an art studio for many of our artists that we do have in the community. And it's hard to find space. And that's a great building. I was in that building just about a year ago. I mean, it's solid, it's nice. And as Commissioner Yunus said, it's a great use for that building. So, with all those things and all those factors, to sum it up, really, I mean, I cannot help but support this wholeheartedly.
Commissioner Berry, do you want to add or anything?
I think enough has been said. Certainly, I think it's a very worthy project, and I will be supporting the motion.
We have a motion and a second on favor. Sign by the same. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. June 12th, man, the year's half over. June 12th, City Council. Congratulations and good luck.
Sure.
Wait. I'm going to take a five-minute recess.
I got it. I got it. Fine. Yeah, okay. But I need to sign. Oh, yeah, you do. You do. Go ahead, sign.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. I don't know. I'm 45, but I might be-
Hmm? Oh, no, no. That's probably what we're talking about sometimes.
It's not every single one. It's not if one of these is-
All for-
It's like there are people hanging out here. I can't imagine the other ones are-
Even point two says, uh-
So linked.
And property.
Right, right, right. But then that got fur.
These type of properties, like at this stage, are concerned currently.
Hmm. Mm-hmm. The next one is the, there will be, residents for women, right? Right.
We have, we have a-
I thought that's why I said-
These two should be pretty fast because Nick and I have beer to drink.
I'm so hungry at four. I'm free to leave.
Yeah. Here, right?
Yeah.
Oh, tree tree. I know that's old.
I lived on the other, across, on the north side of Circle.
Here. Uh, there. Hey. Intercom. I didn't let it, I'm not going to stay.
Okay, great.
Madeline, tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready.
You're ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, sure. I just had it spelt.
Actually, my petitioner is not here.
Oh, well.
The petitioner stepped out.
You want to go get him? Tell him we're going to start?
It's a while to read it all.
It's not, there's no way to find-
What? You better let the record reflect that Councilman, or Commissioner Yunus left at 1416.
Okay. I didn't even notice that. I wonder if it's still like-
Kim, you got the next one?
I do.
Okay. We can read it into the record. Go ahead.
Yeah, you've got to give your report. Okay, okay.
1818.
Case number PG 1818, request to hold a public hearing and forward a recommendation to City Council on the request of Camilla Rabjohns of Vindictus Woods to obtain a special use in a Class R4 single-family residential district for an assisted living facility with waivers for the property identified as parcel identification number 1432132005 with an address of 1328 West Circle Road, Peoria, Illinois, Council District 2. Petitioners requesting to obtain the special use for assisted living as described below. The dwelling unit, the, it's a single-family house, so technically it's one dwelling unit. The occupants will live together as a single housekeeping unit. So, no waivers for that portion of it. Regarding parking, the existing driveway, this is a Google photo of the house, the existing driveway has, is here, and there's room for one independently maneuverable parking space. Additionally, if you look at the front and measure it out, there's room for one parking space there. The applicant states that except for the resident staff member that is proposed, it's not expected that residents will have vehicles. The code requires one parking space for every three residents plus one parking space per employee. If occupancy is limited to four residents plus one employee, only two parking spaces are required. And so, you've got, you have street, you have, again, what I've just said on the driveway. However, a waiver would be required because the off-street parking requirements would only support the one independently maneuverable, and we would not make that. So, two parking spaces would be required, and then therefore, one waiver, waivers required even though technically the two spaces are still accommodated, if you follow, it's just that it's not off-street. No applicable or not applicable, excuse me, no comment or not applicable for the following list, and that's mechanical and utility screening, landscaping, signage, exterior lighting, setbacks in yards, hike, and materials. The house, it's an existing house. Regarding density, it meets the unit requirement, it's only, again, it's one unit in the R4 zoning district. However, I am going to talk about the occupancy, though. The house contains a total of four bedrooms. The petitioner requests eight occupants. The applicant, as it said, so eight occupants. The bedroom size and headroom constraints limit the occupancy to seven, and that's for inspection and a write-up from our building inspector. The master bedroom would be limited to two occupants. The small bedroom on the second floor, there's two bedrooms on the second floor, would be limited to one. And then, on the first floor, there are two bedrooms that each, by building code, could accommodate two residents each. The ability to provide adequate parking, concern of overcrowding, suggests limiting to five or fewer occupants. And that would be four residents and one staff member. Also noting that if you look at the parking requirements of three, one space for every three residents plus one for the onsite staff, you're maximizing ability for parking at that point. That, that's how you get to four residents and one staff member as well, total of five, because for the residents, it's technically 1.33 parking spaces plus the one. After that, you jump over to, you end up in three parking spaces, which don't fit within the property technically. Just as a side note. So, therefore, the thought is that, again, that maximizes occupancy while limiting impact to the neighborhood. And say this in the context that, you know, if this were a single-family house, no more than three unrelated adults would be living there. So, the property contains 0.11 acres of land occupied with a single-family house and a garage, zoned R4, single-family, surrounded by R4, single-family. In 1931 to 1958, it was zoned for one family dwelling. 58 to 63, A1 family. 63 to 90, R1, low-density residential. 90 to present, R4, single-family. The Development Review Board examines each application against standards found in the Unified Development Code. And found to be met are that there's no detriment to public health, safety, or general welfare, no injury to the property or diminished property values, no impediment to orderly development, provides adequate facilities, ingress/egress measures designed to minimize traffic congestion for public services used, then a public benefit. The rest, this and the following would be not applicable, conforms to all district regulations. Again, there's no new development here. The comprehensive plan, critical success factors, reinvest in neighborhoods, the City Council strategic plan goals, smart population growth. Recommendation, again, is the Development Review Board recommends approval of the request to obtain the special use for an assisted living facility, and with the following waiver, the waiver to allow the one parking space as was described. But a number of conditions, allow a total of five occupants, which is four residents plus one staff resident. A maximum of two vehicles would be permitted for the household at the property, rather on or off-street. One onsite staff member would be required, must remain at the site at any time a resident is present. City staff may inspect as needed. Smoke detectors need to be interconnected in all bedrooms, and carbon monoxide detectors must be located within 15 feet of all bedrooms. Licensed electrician must verify all electrical works has been done since the new owner has taken possession, and permits would be required as applicable. And I'm noting, this does fall under assisted living as a special use. Petitioner is present, and within your packet, and possibly in her testimony can give further explanation of what is intended for this. It's, assisted living can mean a number of things. We're not talking about a nursing home. It's more of a, a sober living is the term that's been used. That term is not precisely in the zoning ordinance. Again, that's explained in the documents in your packet, and the petitioner is present to give a further explanation.
I've got a couple of questions because I'm having a hard time hearing today, so-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bear with me. Under the parking, when you say your applicant states that except for the resident staff member, it is not expected that residents will have vehicles. To me, that means, A, they could have vehicles. Is that how you would read that, too?
Yes, and to my knowledge, she's not prohibiting vehicles. She can say that in her- Smoke detectors need to be interconnected in all bedrooms, and carbon monoxide detectors must be located within 15 feet of all bedrooms. Licensed electrician must verify all electrical works has been done since the new owner has taken possession, and permits would be required as applicable. And I'm noting, this does fall under assisted living as a special use. The petitioner is present, and within your packet and possibly in her testimony can give further explanation of what is intended for this. It's... Assisted living can mean a number of things. We're not talking about a nursing home. It's more of a sober living is the term that's been used. That term is not precisely in the zoning ordinance. Again, that's explained in the documents in your packet, and the petitioner is present to give a further explanation.
I've got a couple of questions, because I'm having a hard time hearing today, so...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bear with me. Under the parking, when you say your applicant states that except for the resident staff member, it is not expected that residents will have vehicles. To me, that means, A, they could have vehicles. Is that how you would read that, too?
Yes, and to my knowledge, she's not prohibiting vehicles, and she can say that in her testimony. But, so, yes.
Which would...
Could.
The driveway is a driveway. If it was a resident, and they would have more, they could have two or three cars parked in that driveway.
But we're recommending the condition where we're limited to two for storage. And two or three, I don't know that that would fit. There is a garage. You also have a setback requirement. The first 15 feet could not be used for a permanent parking space. And to be considered a parking space, they need to be independently maneuverable versus stacked. That is very different than having a guest over or service or, you know...
So because of the special use, there's different parking requirements than if it was just a residence?
No, the parking requirements are for the assisted living, for the category that it falls under.
You said, so it's a different thing if it was a...
Not because it's a special use, it's because of the parking requirements that apply to it. That use happens to be listed as a special use.
Would we enforce the same parking that you're talking about right now if it was a residence?
If it was a single-family residence, no, the parking requirements would be different.
Somebody could park within 15 feet of the front of the sidewalk?
Yeah, the condition would not be... We wouldn't have an ability to place the condition for a single-family.
And then I was confused, because you were saying we'll allow off-street parking. Well, off-street parking's allowed anyway, isn't it? I mean, that is...
I'm not stating... It's not that we would allow it, it's that it exists, so the site could accommodate two spaces already on its own. So when we're talking about impact to the neighborhood, you've already got... You already have room for one space out front, and you have one space in the driveway. Again, that's independently maneuverable. So if you limit the spaces to that, then you're not spilling over, you're not stacking the spaces, you're not moving on to spaces in front of other people's property.
Okay, so what I'm getting to... What I'm hearing is that you're... We're going to allow one car to be parked in the driveway and one car on the street, period?
As a maximum.
Okay. Then...
For the household. That's... Again, that's not talking about if they have guests or things like that.
I understand that, because it's the same deal we did with when the Bethesda people came and put all the houses in the neighborhoods, which I have one down the street from me. So I... Second of all, you said that they wanted eight people in this house, including the resident?
Yes.
So they'd have seven other people in the house?
That's the request. That's not the recommendation.
Okay, that's... Okay. Then you said, this says five, but then when you were counting the bedrooms, you said one in each bedroom upstairs?
No.
This is what you stated. You said, "One in each of the bedrooms upstairs, two in the master bedroom, and two in the other two bedrooms down on the first floor." So that was already up to eight. So that's why I was confused, as I was writing it down.
No, no, no. No, no. Excuse me. The master bedroom, if you're looking at just the... From the results in the inspection?
Yes.
The master bedroom and a smaller bedroom are what's on the upstairs. The master bedroom can accommodate two.
Two people.
The smaller bedroom, one.
And those are both upstairs?
Upstairs. And both of those have the constraints, the ceilings are kind of slanted.
Okay, it's because of dorms, yeah, okay.
That's why it was...
That's...
Otherwise, it would be argued three in the master. On the first floor, two, two in each could be...
Okay, if that's where you get seven, okay. I'm with you now. I guess I was assuming when you said master bedroom and then two upstairs, I thought there were two bedrooms upstairs.
Exactly as in the memo.
Okay. Any other questions for the city? You guys? Petitioner, I'd come forward, please. State your name and address for the record.
Camilla Rabjohns, 2116 North Prospect Road, 61603. Okay, thank you for having me. I started sober living four years ago. I started in Invictus Woods. I did the first house 20 miles from Peoria on 30 acres of woods, because I thought that it would help them get out of town, you know, get their brains back, and find a job, have an address to find a job. Two years ago, I came in front of you and bought a house here in town on Prospect Road, and we have eight resident men in that house. We've had no complaints from either house ever. We need a house for women, so I've been looking all over the city for a house for women, and it's really, really hard to find. I wanted a safe neighborhood for these ladies. I didn't want to have to gut the house, and that in itself is really hard to find. So I found this house in this lovely neighborhood, and a lovely house for these ladies to come to. My rules are, they must successfully complete at least a 28-day treatment program. And then I talked to the counselor along with the lady, and we discussed about their recovery and how they're doing. They're in recovery. It'll be a house with no alcohol, no drugs, and no people drunk driving. There'll be no wild parties with alcohol. Will they have a cookout in the backyard? Probably, but nothing big and wild. They have no cars, because they have nothing. These women come devastated from treatment. So that's why I don't care about cars. They're not going to... And I had to find a house on the bus route. This house is a half a block from a bus route. It's in walking distance of Walmart and Aldi's and all those job opportunities in those little malls. So it's a perfect place for these ladies to go. I do have a resident, a house manager, but she'll be allowed to have a job. She will help me with the girls, the ladies. We'll drug test them at least once a week on a random basis, which we use a legitimate lab testing. We get the results back within 24 hours. We'll also have a breathalyzer on staff, so if alcohol's their drug of choice, we will be able to breathalyze them immediately. I can go down to seven, that's fine, two per bedroom. It's important to have two per bedroom. We do not want them to isolate. We want them to be accountable to each other. So not only are they accountable to themselves, they're accountable to their housemates. And you know what's going on with the drug addiction. I mean, it's devastating our city. The overdose rate's gone up 46% in our city from 2017 to 2018. You know, they need a place to go where they can feel safe, secure, and respected. And I will expect them to respect their neighbors, as I hope they will respect them. And over on Prospect House, the guys, the snow... I came over one day, and there was... The sidewalks weren't shoveled, and I said, "Why aren't the sidewalks shoveled?" And they said, "Well, I don't know why." And I said, "Because you need to shovel the walks to have respect. I want the neighbors to respect you." And after I said that, they were shoveled every day. Every day it snowed, and we were the only sidewalk in the neighborhood that was shoveled. I'm not a slumlord. We'll keep the house up. I've been in town 30 years. People know me, and I keep the houses up. It's my reputation on this business.
Yeah, I remember when you came before us with the other house, so, yeah. Any questions?
Yeah, Ms. Rabjohns, I have a question. Your request is that there would be seven clients and then a resident, is that correct?
No. There'll be six residents and one house manager.
Okay.
We'll do two per bedroom and one in the... The resident manager will have the small bedroom upstairs.
Okay. So not eight, but seven, but it is six clients. And you're aware that the city's position is that they're only recommending approval if you have four residents plus one staff, is that correct?
I understand that's what they are recommending, yes.
And you... If that was the only way that could be approved, is that feasible for you?
No, because they need to have a roommate. It's important that they don't isolate and that they're accountable to each other.
And you understand staff's... Well, maybe you don't, I don't know, but I believe the staff's position is that the number of occupants, it's not necessarily per bedroom, it's the impact potentially on parking.
Correct, and they're not going to have cars.
Yeah, we'll take this up in a minute.
Yeah.
Any other questions for... You guys, you're good?
I have actually one more question. I simply have to ask this in light of our last case. Will any of your residents be sex offenders? And I'm not kidding when I say that. Will they...
No, I didn't say it here, because they're ladies. I guess I should have, I was discriminating. I do that with the men's houses. I take no sexual or violent offenders. It's just drugs. Drugs or alcohol, addiction.
I guess I'll ask one small question. Sorry, Chairman. Well, since you're pretty well certain that there won't be cars there, I mean, would you agree to say there's going to be no cars, or maybe one car and one staff vehicle there on the site?
Maybe, there may be two cars, but if I only allowed two cars, and the girls get successful and can get a car, I'll say, "Well, you can't... You'll have to move. You can't stay here."
Thank you. I'd like to give public testimony for our against this case.
My name is Jamie Stahl. I reside at 1606 West Queens Court Road. I'm here on behalf of the property next door. It's 1324. Currently, that's my mother's house. My daughter and granddaughter also reside there as well. We've owned that. My parents owned that house since 1957. This is a residential neighborhood. It always has been. It's always been very successful. There's very little crime in the neighborhood. Traffic right now can get a little congested. If there's cars parked on both sides of the street, there's only one more car to come through. I think my biggest concerns here are the fact that that house, I've been in it many times, I mowed that yard 100 times when I was a kid. It's not big enough for the number of people that she's proposing to put in there. It's just not. Those bedrooms are small. People are stacked on top of each other, and then you're looking at people getting aggravated with each other, and they're already, you know, drug addiction, alcohol addiction. I applaud what she's trying to do. I just do not believe that this is the place for it. She said she had difficulty finding places. I buy rental properties all the time. There's hundreds of houses that do not sit in a residential neighborhood that would probably be more suited, that maybe sit on a corner lot, where you're not going to have parking issues. Again, at $150 a week per resident, this is a business. It's a commercial business at that. I have issues... The gentleman up front here, I'm sorry, I can't see your name, in the last previous case, read in a statement about the effects of property values, the traffic and safety and well-being of the neighborhood. The community here, this particular subdivision, for the last 60 years has been just a stand-up neighborhood. You can see everything's meticulously maintained, well-cared-for properties. We just recently cut down the tree at the next-door one that you can't see from there. We spent a lot of money just rehabbing the house, put a new roof on it and everything right next door. I honestly believe that this is going to devalue the property, not just ours, but every other neighbor in that direct vicinity. People have lived there. Mr. Lake in the red brick house, he's probably been there 40 years. My parents have been there 60 years. The Stewart's up the street, been there 60 years. I know Greg here's probably been there 30 years, if I'm not speaking, I'll turn there for you. We know each and every neighborhood, I can walk down the street and name everybody that lives there, and I haven't even been living in that neighborhood more than 30 years. It's my mother, and my daughter, and my granddaughter that not reside there. And she talks about the cars, but there's not a guarantee. The prop... The house right next door, 1324, there's a fire hydrant there. That literally eliminates a lot of cars the other direction. You can see it under the tree. You can't park a very long vehicle there just because of the proximity of that fire hydrant, as you can see there. You couldn't park a truck in front of there legally. So that's another concern, because that does eliminate one parking space from right there in front of the house. I guess my other concerns would be, you know, she says she doesn't... They don't have cars, but there's no guarantee that they can't have cars. Another thing is, and I know this from owning rental property, what's to say you put seven or eight people in that house, seven, and they all want emotional support animals, or they all want therapy dogs, or they all want service animals? She can't restrict that. That's HUD, Fair Housing Guidelines. She can't tell them, "No." You can't have that kind of animals there, and she can't say that with certainty that that would not be allowed. Those are my positions on it. I'm very much opposed to it, and not just because my daughter and granddaughter are in that adjacent property, but because I have a lot of respect for a lot of the other people that still live there, and I just... I do not think this is a very good idea. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Vicki Lewis. I live at 1605 El Camino Drive in Peacon, Illinois. I come as a colleague and as a friend of Camilla Rabjohns and the Rabjohns. I am an addictions counselor.
I am addictions counselor. I work with treatment centers, sober living, all levels of care throughout the United States. I have brought many people into treatment, and things that I'd like to say. First of all, the Rabjohns, they just didn't do this on a whim. It wasn't just something, "Oh, we're going to go buy a house, we're going to put people that are recovering into a house." And I think she's proven that. She has two very successful houses. I've been through the whole journey with her the whole time. She consults with many other professionals, myself, clear across the country of what other people are doing, keeping in the guidelines of what needs to be kept. Everybody that comes into treatment at her level of care has already been through treatment. They don't do drugs, they don't do alcohol, they don't... They're already in recovery. There's not going to be any... Somebody drinking next door and driving out into your neighborhood. She makes sure that her clients are drug-tested, breathalyzers, just to make people honest. Most people in the addiction community go to 12-step meetings. Not always, but most of the time, it's one of the requirements to make sure that there's support. And that's why there's such support to have two people in... Together in a room, just because they can talk to each other at night. It's a good support system. It's a model that many people over the nation have like that. Camilla, the Rabjohns are a person of their word. If you would look at her other houses, they... One house in particular may stand out, because she's done so much to the exterior and interior of the house that it actually has improved the neighborhood. She... If she says she's going to do something, she's going to do it, and she will go by the guidelines of what she's doing. I've watched her. It's been a journey. She would not go into a neighborhood and cause any kind of harm to anyone. I just, you know, sometimes, too, and people look at the stigma of addiction as people coming in and they're drinking, having parties, and that's what you hear on the media, but what people need is other people to support them so that they can move on out of that lifestyle. And Peoria right now, Peacon, where I live right now, I grew up in Peoria, but we have had an epidemic with synthetic cannabinoids, with rat poison in it. We've had all kinds of things. So the more positive we bring into our communities as a tri-county, the more that we can help everyone, so that we don't have some of these problems. So I am very supportive. The ladies need a house, not just men. And, anyway, that's my stand on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anything else you'd like to add, Ms. Rabjohns?
I wanted to also say about the staff member who will be allowed to have a job, the house manager. So I go over to the houses every day. I go sometimes twice a day. So the... So the ladies may be at home for a short time by themselves, but I'll be in and out, and the staff member will be in and out. And as far as the city staff inspecting the house, what does that mean?
The ability to come by and make sure everything is still up to code, make sure there's still a staff member that lives there.
Do that to all the other houses that...
It's a condition that's requested, and anything that is a special use, we would inspect to make sure that it's still meeting the conditions of special use. We're not talking about surprise.
That's disrespectful and discriminatory. I don't think I would like that. As far as the dogs, I can say no. I've said no at Prospect, and I've said no at Invictus Woods. If they want to bring a dog, or a cat, or anything, I say then you cannot come here. So I can say no. There'll be no animals at the house.
Ms. Rabjohns, may I ask a question? I know it would vary with the individual over time, but maybe with your experience with the Invictus Woods for the male residents, how common is it for visitors to come in? I'm not talking about causing disturbance, but just people, their friends, their relatives, someone to support them. If you have six, or five, or whatever the number is of actual residents there, how common is it for them to have visitors? And can they have them whenever they want, or are there hours, or how does that, how would that work?
Yes, both houses are different. We don't hardly have any visitors in Invictus Woods. What they usually do is a family member, a loved one, comes and picks them up and takes them somewhere for dinner, possibly, or if there's a special occasion overnight. Prospect House, every now and then, they'll have somebody come in to get the resident and take them out. And I'm not going to allow men in the house. I'm going to have cameras put on the house, and they will not, if the girl, if the ladies have a date, they can pick them up at the house, but they will not be able to go into the house.
Okay. And one last question. You're not required to do this, but I was curious, it wasn't mentioned. Did you, did you have the opportunity, or take the opportunity, to talk to immediate neighbors of this property, or the Neighborhood Association, about your intended use?
I sent an email to Greg and Angela Metz, and they called several neighbors, as many as they could get a hold of. One Sunday afternoon, I came over and spoke to several of the neighbors. Some neighbors sent emails to Chuck Grab, and he forwarded on to me, and I responded to every email I had, and I gave my phone number and said, "Please give me a call. I'd be happy to come over and talk to you about it." One responded, said, "Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do," and the other one didn't respond. And I sent, I sent two emails back to her.
Okay. Could you characterize what, the feedback you got, whether verbal or emails?
It was very positive, very positive, and the house next door that the other gentleman was talking about, the man who's lived there, he wanted to hire one of the gals for housekeeping. And I said, "No, no, no. You have to wait and talk to me first, because I would not recommend somebody who's straight out of treatment to come into your house to house clean." I said, "Yeah, maybe if they were with me and they have, you know, and I think they're trustworthy and confident. I don't want anybody hiring them to do anything." So I've had very positive responses from people.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mrs. Rabjohns, just one quick question. You have, you questioned condition number four that the city is putting forth. Are you okay with all the other conditions that the city is proposing?
I've taught my, with my recommendations also. The, I'd like to have seven. I'd like to have two per bedroom with one house manager. The car is fine. I don't care about the cars. Two is fine. The on-staff manager, she'll, they'll be there, but they won't be there all the time. They are allowed to have a job, an eight-hour job. And frankly, they have jobs. They go to AA and NA meetings. I mean, they go out. They're not at the house all the time. I mean, I go to Prospect House two times a day, and I have to call and say, "Let me know when you're home. I need to come over and talk to you." And we have house meetings once a week, so we find out what everybody's doing, how they're doing. If there's a problem in the house, we discuss the problems. I think that, I think that's disrespectful and discriminatory to do an inspection. I'm not a slumlord. I take care of my houses. You can trust me.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
You have a motion. Our closing here. You have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the petitioner's request along with staff recommendations, with the exception of item four. I just think that language needs to be cleaned up a little bit, because it's a little bit too ambiguous to say inspect as needed.
I'll second. Okay. Hold on. Excuse I'm going to... I don't even remember any words inserted, anything like this, in anything that I've ever been on this commission in the last X number of years. It is that the city's just... Would I like to see something like that? Probably, because I think there's a lot of things that we've passed that have never been inspected, because city, the city of Peoria is a complaint-based city. And that's how things get inspected, which I think is reversed from the way that it should be. But I wouldn't, I was thrown back when I saw that statement in there. So I would go along with Commissioner Hurd on that, that that would be taken out. I am still figuring out in the back of my head the difference between the five and what, and six. Because it, to me, to have six occupants in there, plus six residents, plus seven total people, to me makes sense. The bedrooms hold that. That's what you said when we counted them up. The experience has been, we haven't got any complaints on their house in two years or anything from the house that was done before, which was all the male, which is a male house. I, so... Speak as a neighbor of having a house like this around the corner from me that I had to step down from here when we talked about it. There has been zero complaints, and actually, that house has been kept up better than the neighbors' houses. So I... You want to explain?
So, which, I can take them one at a time here. On the, the, let me just start talking. There was a lot of questions there. The current house that we're talking about, on Circle, is much smaller in land area and square footage than the other home that had, that was approved for eight units. The one on Circle is .11 acres. The one on Prospect is .35 acres, so about a third of an acre. The Prospect House, we've got the listing sheet with the square footage, and I just quick looked on the GIS. So from the GIS numbers, the current house that we're speaking of, the square footage is 1,614. The house on Prospect, the square footage listed is 2,071.
The house on Prospect, I only got the square.
Just letting you know, that's a much larger property. Yes, there have been no complaints.
And there's more people that live there.
It's approved for, I believe it was eight.
And she's...
For eight residents and two staff.
Okay, and she's, she's asking for six residents.
Well, in her application, she said eight.
Okay.
And again, per the inspection, that's the square footage. But then you also look at, as I say, we've already talked about impact, and I've explained all of that. What I also didn't mention that this is not, it's beyond our realm, but the bedrooms are not large. If you think about the size of a, say, a twin-size bed, and this is way beyond, but if you think about the configuration, twin-size bed is three and a half, three and change by three and change. Anyway, if you look at the, that, it comes to the layout, it's very tight. And you start thinking about how that can work. It just further adds to the possible congestion. So, as I say, we looked at it from both directions and tried to kind of meet in the middle for our recommendations. Concern about the, how dense it would be in that house, for lack of a better way to say it, the amount of people unrelated, living together. Based on, again, on every other factor that we look at, that seems relevant, everything from the bedroom size to, you can't predict additional garbage, but vehicles is a more valid way to look at it. Again, the parking, that's the only reason that was brought up. And again, just in general, the overall, the density, five seem to be a fair number. We're not saying how many people, we can say a maximum for the bedrooms. We're not saying how they need to distribute it or lay it out. That's up to them. As far as the inspections, anytime you have a special use, we can inspect to make sure we've got compliance with the terms of the special use. In this case, one of the terms of the special use is that there is somebody, there's an onsite resident manager. So if you take that out, and we do have a complaint, or a reason to believe they're not meeting the terms of the special use, yes, we can still go and verify that they're meeting the terms of the special use. This was meant to address concerns that had been expressed to us. These, those same things may come up again when you go, when you get to the council level. But again, if it's more comfortable to take that out, we still can make sure they're in compliance. But my other suggestion, if you keep it in, would be to maybe add to that sentence something like to, to, you know, "City staff needs to inspect, if needs comma, to ensure compliance with terms of special use," if that clarifies better. Did I get all the...
In all the time that you've worked for the city, how many times have we inspected something that has been a special use?
Oh, we've had several complaints. I can think of at least one that went through pretty rigorous court that I was involved in, one that we revoked the special use. Inspect, yes. Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So the question would be then, I guess, either we either be consistent and always put that statement in so that they know that it's a possibility that this could occur, or we never put the statement in, and when they're going through the application process, that they know that it's, this is something that's always going to happen.
This is staff addressing concerns that were brought to us, or been conversations with council member? It is your choice if you're comfortable with that being in there. As far, the word discriminatory was meant, that is not intended. We have an obligation to make sure things are met. Again, we're responding. Part of the reason for having conditions is to just ensure, you know, as it's stated in the ordinance, to make sure that all of the criteria that you're looking at will be met. If you feel that's unnecessary, let's take it out. But I'm just, I'm staff.
Okay.
But see, staff still has, under their purview, to determine, like you just said, right, to terminate their special use if it is abused in some shape or form?
It's a process. If, and if it's not in place or in the compliance with the terms of the special use, as the ordinance states, it can be revoked, but we would need proof of that. So that would, I mean, like I said, that would be, that would be a process. And we're not looking to show up and, "Hey, let's walk through." I mean, there would be a complaint, and, "Okay, we need to investigate," and we would call. I mean, we're not talking about...
I didn't think that's what you were thinking at. I was just thrown back. And this is in District Two?
This is District Two.
Any other questions? Mr. Chairman?
Anna Carter, could you read back the...
Yeah.
Motion as you, as you heard it, please.
Oh, me, sorry. Approve along with, along with staff recommendations without condition number four.
Okay.
Approve...
The motion is to approve with all the staff's conditions striking number four.
Which was the inspection, sort of ambiguous inspections. But just to be clear, staff recommendations, which is part of the motion, is to allow five, total of five occupants. Less than what the petitioner was requesting, just to be clear.
Correct.
We have a motion in second. I'm going to read the finding of facts, please.
Finding of fact for a special use. The establishment, maintenance, or operation of this special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, moral comfort, or general welfare. The special use will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood in which it is to be located. The establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Adequate facilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities have been or will be provided. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. The proposed special use is not contrary to the objectives of the official comprehensive plan of the City of Peoria. If a public use or a use providing public utility service, that such use or service shall meet a demonstrable public need and provide a public benefit. And lastly, the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located.
Do they have any concerns?
I would just make a comment. It occurs to me that this is a, it's not a tiny house, but it is a very compact house, and I've never been in it. You know, we obviously don't have the opportunity to go in it, even if we wanted to, I suppose, but we normally wouldn't go inside a building for a, you know, a case like this. But it certainly appears that, and I agree with, I believe and appreciate what Kim Smith is saying in that two people in a very small bedroom that are adults would be... It seems like it's really packing a lot of people into a very small property, and also very, very small area to allow for parking. So I understand from Mrs. Rabjohns that it makes sense, the goal is to have them share a bedroom. That makes a lot of sense to me. But in general, I do feel that maybe this house is not the best location, or it's too small for this particular use. So I'm actually quite torn. I think it's a needed thing, and I know it's going to be a NIMBY thing, where probably many people would prefer not to have unrelated people like this living next to them. But I think sounds, as what we've been told, that her other facilities are, operate very well. And I think it would, no one would have any idea that anything else is going on besides a single-family residence there, more than likely. I doubt that it would impact property values, as long as the house is kept up. You know, the yard is mowed, and the house is painted and maintained, and it's probably going to be a pretty quiet place in reality. So I'll support the motion, because it does reduce the number of residents to four. That's obviously not what the petitioner, Mrs. Rabjohns, had requested, but I, to me, it seems like it's a compromise, and also perhaps a better fit for a very small house.
Anybody else? On favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same thing. Motion passes. June 12th, City Council.
Mr. Chairman, just so I'm clear, the motion is as presented, striking number four.
Correct.
Thank you.
Last case. Yeah, PG 1819.
Well, we know how to clear a room.
Yeah.
Oh, Nick's still here, though.
We have to be, we still have to be professional, I guess.
Gladly. I've been waiting on you.
Okay.
Hell, yeah.
I just wanted to... So this is a public hearing on the request of Tyler Seibert to rezone property from a Class R4, single-family residential district to a Class CG, general commercial district, for the property identified as parcel identification number 1819171. for the property identified as parcel identification number 1819-177025, which has an address of 2311 South Ligonier Street, but it's also been known and referenced as 4201 Southwest Adams Street.
Why?
That is a very good question, and it's not entirely clear historically, but both addresses appear in our records, so we're fixing that as well, and I'll get to that. The subject property is quite a small property, it's about 3,400 square feet in size. It is developed with a single-story commercial building. The property is Zone R4, single-family residential, and as you can see on the map on the screen, it's surrounded by CG, general commercial, on all sides except immediately adjacent to the west, there is adjacent R4, single-family. Historically, dating back to 1931, our records show residential zoning, so it has been consistent in that matter. The research that I found, I think, shed some light on that, in that in 1915, before we had any zoning regulations, which started in 1931, there was a single-family house located on the plan north, on the very north end of the property. There was a single-family residence built there. Sometime between 1939 and 1944, a commercial building, which is the building that you see there today, was built immediately adjacent to that house. So the house was first, hence the single-family or residential zoning, and the commercial building followed, and since 1944, our records show that commercial building having a use as a bar or tavern consistently in that building. In 2013, the house was demolished, so the house is no longer there, and as a result, we've got a non-conforming situation, where we have now the remaining commercial building and residential zoning, so we've got a conflict there. And part of what brought this to light, and brought forth this application to you, is within the last year and a half or two, the liquor license expired because of the vacant building, and reapplication for that liquor license found the residential zoning, and that does not work with a liquor request. You cannot have liquor in a residential zoning. So we took a look at this, and we found that this does need to be corrected. So that's what's before you today, is to change the zoning to the commercial, to match the commercial building. No bearing on the liquor license, that's just information shedding light as to what brought this to you. The other component of this research found the address conflict. The clerk's records through the liquor licensing consistently reference 4201 Southwest Adams. The tax identification number is tied to 2311 Ligonier. Again, I think it dates back to having a house, most likely within Ligonier address. The commercial building may be referenced as 42101 Southwest Adams, because that is a legitimate number, that would be, but for whatever reason, our documents show the addresses.
Which way's the front? Which way's the front door face, Ligonier or Adams?
Adams. So let me show you, let me go there. So what we have done through our city... So what we have requested through our city records is to change the address to 4201 Southwest Adams, to be consistent. We've contacted fire department, the police department, emergency, everybody has signed off and accepted that the 4201 Adams address is acceptable. So Ligonier, the Ligonier reference will be removed. It'll be in our records for historical purposes, but from this point forward... So this was probably the front door that has been modified.
Out to Adams, right.
This, if I can, I'm scanning on Adams. Ligonier is here.
Right there, and there's a door there, too, that's what I...
Yeah.
The picture I'm looking at is that one.
Yeah.
So you want to change the address to Adams, or leave it as...
We want to change it to Adams. I understand the door situation, but we feel that this would be appropriately addressed as Adams.
There's more frontage on Ligonier.
You know, at some point...
We're just voting on rezoning the property.
Rezoning, yeah.
So they'll figure out the address.
There's not the request of your approval for the address, respectfully.
I know, I know, I know.
But yeah, you're right, it's just a change in zoning from residential to commercial.
And we have CG behind it, and CG all around, except for on the lefts, so, I mean, because it's all residential to me, that kind of, I mean, it kind of falls in where it needs to fall in, but it's kind of spot zoning to me, too, but...
The house used to sit back here. Yeah, it...
It's almost textbook for CG.
Yeah, it is.
Because it's a corner property that's a neighborhood tavern, or a corner shop, I mean, it's exactly what CG is supposed to be, a buffer from Main Street to the, so...
Yeah, I agree with you. Anybody have any questions for the city? Petitioner here? You want to say anything? Do you want to have public testimony for or against? None, I'll close the hearing. Do I have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Would you like to read the findings of facts, please?
Venn diagram first, though. I'm just kidding. Rezoning findings of fact. Uses of, we need to determine, is there no negative or a negative impact on the following? Existing uses of property within the general area of the property in question, the zoning classification of property within the general area of the property in question, the suitability of the property in question to the uses permitted under the existing zoning classification, the trend of development, if any, in the general area of the property in question, the suitability of the property for the use or uses proposed by the proffered amendment, the investigation of other suitable ways of accomplishing the proposed purpose of the amendatory petition, the health, safety, and general welfare of the city in the general and immediate area of the property subject to the amendment, the enjoyment of property by neighbors for its intended use, that granting the amendment is consistent with the purpose and intent of this development code, and lastly, that granting the amendment is consistent with the purpose and intent of the adopted plans.
Anybody have anything in regard to those? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Do you really have old style on tap?
Well, if you want it.
All right. Anybody like to address the commission? Seeing none. I have a motion for adjournment.
Moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion passes. See you guys in June. All right, I got to go to my other job. As a master, that's a...
It is now, so it's kind of not...
No, I did not. I saw you guys had something.
Put thing in the over here. I'm more of a trick over degree.
So what they want to do is have, like boxing and stuff like that.
Yeah, it should be fun. It will be, but I got to work.
I'll tell you more about it as I learn more. Looking at that old Tricold copier building.